I call to order this special meeting of Bullhead City Elementary School Board on Tuesday, 10/22/2019 at 6:00 PM. Secretary, please call the roll.
Doug Lutz?
Here.
Brandy Dubois? Jeanne Borland?
Here.
Cory Burgess?
Here.
Diane Beersley?
Here.
Citizens present, please print your name on the attendance sign-in sheet at the entrance, and will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call to public. This is the time the public may speak to the governing board regarding issues within the jurisdiction of the governing board and subject to reasonable time, space, and manner restrictions as the governing board may establish. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual unless specifically waived by the governing board. At the conclusion of the call to public, individual members of the governing board may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the board, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. However, the governing board cannot take action on matters that have not been noted in advance as part of the agenda. So, I'll go ahead and call up Carrie Burgess.
Just wanted to take this time to clarify some things that I understand happened at our last, at your last meeting. But I wanted to start that no one is expected to be perfect. We're all going to screw up, but real strength of character is mostly shown by our behavior after those screw-ups. Madam President, you screwed up. You quit a job before your contract was over, breaking that contract. As a result, you owe the taxpayers the money they spent on your education. Where is your strength of character? It is time, it is time you own that decision. For the last two years, you have blamed others, attacked those who pointed this out, and attempted to hide from the choices you have made. Where is your strength of character? Last week, you canceled the public meeting, again hiding your behavior. A light was shined on your choices, and you ran for cover. Instead of facing that decision, you lied about Mr. Burgess, who was carrying this light, and claimed he defamed you. There was no defamation when the statements made are true. When are you going to accept the consequences of the, of your choice rather than hide from it? Now this week, there is no agenda item, an agenda you set, to discuss your conflict of interest or grudge that you have with high school. Again, you are running from your choices, attempting to hide them. It appears that your grudge is what is clouding your judgment. You owe the taxpayers thousands of dollars you need to pay, that you need to pay back. You are continuing to lie to the community by saying you don't owe this money. I would ask, where is your honesty? You, me, and Ms. Borland were all in the meeting where you claimed the high school board, quote, "let you out," close quote, of your contract. That is not true. That is illegal for the high school board to do that. It is called a gift of public funds, and it cannot be done by the high school board. How can you represent the taxpayers after stealing thousands of dollars from them? You should be ashamed of yourself. And Ms. Borland, you are completely aware of the facts here. You were at all of these meetings, as I was, and why are you part of this lie also? You know the truth. If you claim to be representing the taxpayers, then stand for what is right. You should also be asking Ms. Beersley to pay the money she owes the taxpayers, or resign her position, serving those same citizens. Right now, Ms. Borland, you are assisting to cover up, to cover up a lie for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ronald Briggs.
Good evening. I'll have to, I'll have to run out. Is that all right? Do I have to stay for the whole meeting?
No.
Okay.
Just, Mr. here, are you speaking into the microphone?
Okay. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in response to the pending action in this board meeting against me and clarify the facts, to seek a favorable vote, favorable vote for securing my livelihood and future career. I will attempt to be brief, though thorough and frank to the matter of my discharge from Fox Creek Junior High School on the 26th of September 2019. Definition of roles. We all understand what a substitute teacher's role is. A substitute teacher arrives at the classroom that has been designated prior to the students' arriving, takes attendance, directs students on doing what has been prepared for them to do, and attempts to engage and manage the students. If the regular teacher has been given bus duty or lunch duty that particular week, the substitute is supposed to perform that duty for them as well, although it is well known that substitutes may not show up to bus or lunch duty either because the instruction is not outlined, or the duty time falls outside of their paid time. We also understand what a classroom teacher's role is. They do the same thing as substitutes, take attendance, direct students on doing what has been prepared for them to do, and keep the students engaged and manage the classroom. In addition to this, teachers will spend many hours preparing lesson plans, grading assignments, completing reports, writing emails, attending training and faculty meetings, helping with flex rides, and in the case of special teachers like myself, it's been that teachers may have out-of-school hour events that have to be planned and executed. When I was hired by this school district over two years ago, it was explained to me that I would be hired as a highly qualified teacher, or possibly defined also as adjunct, considering my extensive music background, including numerous coursework I completed in music while attending university. At the same time, I would be paid substitute wages because I had not finished my bachelor's degree, and obviously was not certified as a teacher. Because of this status, I was agreeable to preparing lesson plans, grading assignments, posting grades, completing all the reports, emailing parents, attending training and faculty meetings, staying after school every day of every week, monitoring the parent pickup, working every day of every week at lunch duty, attending the helping at school events, and putting on several musical performances throughout the school year. These duties can add up to nearly the same amount of time spent with the students in the classroom. Generally, as teachers, compensated for that with their salaries or even a stipend, but I did not receive a cent for any work outside of teaching hours. Nevertheless, despite not being paid for these additional activities, I fulfilled all of these duties because I had agreed to do them for the opportunity to be considered a highly qualified teacher and prepare myself to be a certified teacher. I had been working diligently and completing each of the necessary courses to obtain my elementary education degree and teaching credential, while completing all the previously described tasks, and at the same time fulfilling my duties as a father and husband. I am nearing completion of my program at GCU. When I worked at Coyote Canyon and then Sunrise, I was treated as an equal by the other teachers. The administration and teachers appreciated all that I would do and would regularly verbalize it. If I needed anything, the principals would help me and support me in any way, would give me great advice and direction. I learned so much from my previous administrators, teaching mentors and colleagues, especially for those who came through four grades that I had slowly began to specialize in. I have not had the same experience at Fox Creek as I have had at Coyote Canyon and Sunrise. From the very first day of trouble with a particular student in my percussion class, I attempted to follow the school-wide objectives and classroom management, including a three to four.
Mr. Briggs, we have a limit to three minutes. How much?
I just have half of this page and then this page.
I'll go ahead and allow you to read it for two more minutes, and then I'm going to have to stop you.
Very well. Where the teacher attempts in class approaches before a referral, and this limit was reached and succeeded in the first full week of school, I went to Dr. Bond looking for advice and asked her if she had any differentiation strategy specific for behavior. Response was, "I do not know about music, that's why we have you." I've approached Dr. Bond a number of times, trying to engage in conversation, to clue in on my needing assistance or simply advice. I would have expected or personally observed the instruction in my class now it was received, but never came to any request through text, emails, or calls at the front office. On the 29th August, I sent a text simply requesting that students be removed from my classroom. This particular student decided to go into the adjacent room without permission, and for this defiance, I needed her removed. Thirty minutes after my text, she came and went in the room, went into the room he had refused to come out of, and after talking with him for a moment, came out of the class, or came out of the room, and in front of the whole class, "He's fine, he's just doing his thing." Not even the very next Monday, the student had a following, would literally just come into class, "Look at me, I'm a ghost," like I'm a ghost, and wander into the other rooms. I texted and emailed a couple times after to have students removed, but it was too late. These students joined as rebel cause because they had all witnessed, there were no repercussions for not listening to me.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Briggs, but your time is up. What you can do is you can go ahead and leave us a copy of your letter, and we can review that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to adoption of the agenda.
I move the, adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Just vote on the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, we need to do roll call. Sorry. We're, now that we're doing recordings, we need to do it as a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry.
Doug Lutz?
Here. Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Yes.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
Thank you. On to superintendent's report. 5.1, building report.
Well, since I emailed you all of my little extras, miscellaneous updates on Friday, I don't have any others this evening. I'll answer any questions you might have about the four that were submitted.
I read somewhere about the fire panel at Diamondback. Do you have an update on that?
We're still trying to find out who can actually do something with it. Unfortunately, for most of our buildings, they are so old that the companies that are originally installed those fire panels no longer exist. And so, we're trying to find companies that can come in and either fix them, or if they're unfixable, give us some information to submit to SFB for replacement.
Is it causing issues with those smoke detectors or fire alarms?
No, really, all it's doing is it goes off, and then it sends an alarm to Mr. Newick's phone, frequently in the middle of the night.
So just bother some people.
There doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason. It's the same little alarm spot. You know, they have all the lights, it's the same one. Nobody has been able to find any issues with that particular spot on campus, and there doesn't seem to be any particular reason that it goes off. It's just random.
All right. Thank you. 5.2, attendance, enrollment, and discipline reports.
Those were in your, online, in your packets. We used to say in your packets, not in your packets, but online. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Any questions, Doug, on attendance, enrollment?
Enrollment, I do. If it stands the way it is, Carolyn, approximately how much will we have to cut our budget?
Right now, they've already dinged us for about $15,000, and it doesn't look like it's going to be much more than that. We won't go until after the 40th day. And actually, according to principals, this week, we have had students enrolling and not other students dropping, so I'm guessing that will go up a bit more.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks.
If we don't have any other questions, we'll move on to 5.3, enrollment comparisons, day one to, go ahead, enrollment comparisons.
Well, you can see it went up to the 20th day, dropped a bit at the 40th day. I didn't realize we passed the 40th day. Time flies. Hasn't dropped very much. And they're kind of behind, Doug, relative to your question. They've been behind with putting money in the accounts, they've been behind with sending us letters and those kinds of things. So at this point, we've heard nothing about any differences from the 20th day to the 40th, or from the beginning to the 40th.
Moving on to 5.4, budget update.
I thought you would want updates on the capital budget and the fund balance as of last week. And of course, we're going to talk about the annual financial report a little later in the agenda. Everyone should have some information. We have moved the, the amount that I had last month in the capital budget from that account detail over to another line item, since we will be getting the money from the grant for the BW settlement. We're just awaiting the final, send us the money. They've assured us it's coming, so we will have $550,000 in that account. And so, whatever we owe in the annual payments on the lease purchase of the buses, we can pay from that fund, certainly until that fund is gone. And then, at some point, I will put on the agenda, after we make sure we have all that money in that account, a discussion item for you all to determine if you want to prepay on that five-year lease purchase, or if you want to leave it there, and then we make our payments each year out of that, in which case, the fifth year, then we would have to make up the difference, which would not be a huge amount of money. Or if we want to roll it into capital and use it for something else, or possibly even look at a purchase of a small used special ed bus. We do have need for one of those, simply because our kids who ride those buses are so far apart, that it would be nice to have one that could take a little load off of some of the others. So we've got a number of options to discuss, and you all can be thinking about those for that. So then that brings the, the rest of capital down to some functioning numbers for us to be considering, and for you to be thinking about, particularly related to the information that you got at the workshop last week, about our technology needs and those kinds of things. I'm not prepared at this point to make any recommendations relative to the technology because we're still looking at all kinds of options. And then the fund balance is one that just gives you a report on what it looks like in visions right now, from the, from the 11th of October, so that's last week, actually the week before, and that our funds look pretty good. Some that have changed since, I printed this out and sent it to you, are the ones from 110 to 161, because we have in fact been submitting to the state reimbursement requests for those grants. One of the things that Doug asked me about relative to this is, the same concern that I had, is that they all ended up, except for the Title I school improvement, in that little cluster of grants, in the negative. And you notice that four of them started the year in the negative. Mrs. Lot and I cannot quite understand how, when we work the budget, we do not overspend the grant money we get and still end up in the, in the red. So, our goal is to make sure that at the end of this year, none of those show a negative. And then there are other grants scattered through these others. So if you have questions about any of those, I'll be happy to answer. I will mention 510, which is food service, in the black, and 610, capital outlay. It shows our fund balance at $170,000. That's kind of a mystery to me, because I know that we don't have $170,000, $170,000 in there to spend, but I think part of that is because of some funds that have come in already for this year.
Anybody have any questions? Comments?
I think the best news I have for you was the report I sent on Friday about the over $60,000 reimbursement over costs for food service for September. The one for August, the reimbursements over costs were kind of offset the cost of things to start the year in July, because you have to have things in your pantry and be able to start. But the 69, 60-some thousand for September was very positive.
Any miscellaneous updates?
No.
Thank you. Okay, number six, moving on to donations. Thank you to all who donate to our schools. Fox Creek, Riverbelly Artist Guild donated $600, check for Shakespeare competition. Sunrise received Marilyn Simmons $40 for clothing, and they also received $100 for school supplies from Chili's. And CNS Roy also donated $209.54 clothing, sit spots, and active boards. Coyote Canyon received from Mountain View, Word Chirps of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, $250 and an assortment of backpacks, school supplies, undergarments, and hygiene products. Bullhead Legacy Foundation donated $3,000 and zip-up school jackets. So we appreciate that, and you guys are doing thank you cards. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Number seven, board member updates. Anyone have any updates? Doug, you got any board member updates for us?
No, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Did you want to make any changes to?
Yeah. I move we approve the consent agenda with the exception of 8.3D, extracurricular addendums and other assignments.
I'll second that.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Paul, sorry.
Doug Lutz?
Aye.
Jeanne Borland?
Aye.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to check the action on that one. Somebody can move to table that if you want.
I'll make a motion that we table item 8.3D for our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Doug Lutz?
Aye.
Jeanne Borland?
Aye.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Aye. Thank you. On to old business. So 9.1, we have the Colorado River Administrative Services, IGA.
And, I'm just making sure that... Yeah, I have the old one, I was just looking at.
It didn't change. That one did not change.
Okay. So, do you have any discussion? You just want to move for?
That's the district office.
Yes, yes.
District office.
No, it's the one that says administrative services.
I don't think we have it.
Don't have that one?
Okay. So can you put it up on the screen? There was one that we didn't have any changes on originally. That's the one where we share human resource personnel, the director of ELNAU programs, hearing officer, the director of public communication relations, and the warehouse manager position. And I will note for you, the changes on number, Roman number four, which is putting in what you all had discussed with the crushed board, pay invoices for service contracts in accordance with the terms of the invoice. And then, for Roman number seven, the change the attorney recommended, for any party may terminate this agreement with 30 days' written notice.
Okay, I'll move we approve item 9.1.
I will second that.
Doug Lutz?
Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
So we are on to 9.2, the Colorado River Educational Technology, IGA.
Madam President, this is one that has not changed much either, from the evening that you discussed with the crushed board, number four in red, adding the word additional, and then again, pay invoices for service contracts in accordance with the terms of the invoice. And then, once again, the change on Roman number seven.
I move we approve item 9.2.
Doug Lutz?
Oh, you don't have a second there.
Second, yes.
Can I have a second? Second.
I second it.
Doug Lutz?
Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to 9.3, Colorado River Special Education, IGA. And again, we didn't have many changes, other than taking the principal out, and...
And then the same changes through Roman number four and Roman number seven.
I make the motion, we adopt the Colorado River Special Education Consortium, IGA.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Doug Lutz?
Aye.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Aye.
Okay, on to 9.4, Colorado River Educational Purchasing, IGA.
I move we approve this IGA as presented.
Second. Doug Lutz?
Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
9.5, Colorado River Transportation, IGA. I move to approve the IGA for transportation as presented on October 18th by Superintendent Stewart, showing a 50% cost for each district for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
I'll second that.
Doug Lutz?
Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
9.6, Colorado River Coyote Canyon, IGA. I move to approve the Coyote Canyon IGA as presented on October 18th, 2019, by Superintendent Stewart, showing the high school share of utilities, insurance, maintenance, and cleanings to be 50% of the bills for the year 2019-2020, shared with Colorado River 50-50. So we came up with that.
These were the numbers that we came up with at the workshop.
I just, it doesn't say 50s also.
No, but it was how we calculated it.
It sort of doesn't matter how we prove it, I just didn't want to.
No, it's just cost, we just did costs for, for the use of the facility, took out all the rest of that, and it is exactly what we calculated at that time.
I'll second that then.
Doug Lutz?
Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
9.7, Colorado River District Office, IGA.
I'll move we approve 9.7.
Second. Doug Lutz?
Yes.
Jeanne Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Beersley?
Yes.
9.8, Internet Service for the Superintendent.
And I apologize for not making a copy of this. I'll send Kim to make copies right now, and I'll explain a little bit to you. James could not be here tonight, he has another commitment for our school districts, part of the joint, the IGA for technology. So he wrote an explanation answering the question you had asked about security. So he wrote an explanation answering the question you had asked about security if we were in fact to set up, if you were to allow me to set up internet to my home since I cannot get it to work more than about 10% of the time at my house from the city services, the various ones, because I've tried them all. So when she brings it back, he explains it better than I. It was in a, it wasn't a request that I'd sent to you, it was information I'd sent to you and an update a while back, and he asked for, and then Diane had some concerns based on our discussion last week about internet security, legitimate concerns. Doug, I'll send you a copy of this tomorrow so you can see James' explanation.
Thank you.
I'm purchasing the hardware for this.
Okay.
And I'm paying for the installation part that goes to my house. Essentially, James told me at the end of this, this morning, that this arrangement is actually more secure than what we do for students on a day-to-day basis. And it can be turned off on a moment's notice on this end. So if there were ever any issues, it could be turned off.
I move we approve 9.8.
I second that.
Dougless?
Yes.
Jeanie Borland?
I have a question.
Sure. I mean, if this is something we offer to you, is it something that we need to offer to other employees, or is there a reason you can't have internet at your own house?
I don't know why it doesn't work. Any of the services that I've had, they can't maintain the service. And I don't know if it's my location, if it's the wind. James is in a similar circumstance at his house, and Mr. Oster had approved for him to have the same kind of setup. That's where I got the idea, because I was asking him for advice on what to do. So for instance, yesterday when I returned from my trip and wanted to do some school business, couldn't do it unless I came to the office. And so, and it would be very, based on the way this is described, if I take my surface home, this is how I get to any school business on a secure link. Anything that's mine is on a separate, anything that's my personal stuff is on a separate thing and does not go through our network.
So basically, it's just to connect your work surface?
Yes.
Aye. Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Biersley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 10, new business, 10.1, policy JFAA, admission of resident students.
As one of our employees was looking through policies recently for some information, happened to be looking at this policy and recognized that it said something about, oh, it's actually here, so I'll read it to you. Let's see. It indicates that students who are 18 or older, and we don't have students who are 18 or older, and so it should read students who are 18 or younger. So it's only a change in that one word to make the policy accurate.
This a first reading?
This is first reading.
Okay.
So then we just move on to 10.?
No action.
No, we have to make a motion.
Right, no action.
So we're doing 10.2. ASBA Article 8, Amendment of Bylaws and Core Beliefs.
Madam President, ASBA, of which you are a member as a board, has asked the member districts in the state, I think there are 242 if memory serves, that if there were a change, if they needed to or wanted to make a change in bylaws and core beliefs, that instead of the currently required 66%, two-thirds vote of all of those members to change the bylaws, they would like to change that to 50% plus one member instead of 66. So that is their proposal, to change the bylaws to allow changes in the bylaws to be passed by 50% plus one district as opposed to two-thirds of the districts.
Personally, I do not agree with it. I think anytime a major change in the bylaws or a core belief, it should be two-thirds. 50% plus one is basically Tucson and Phoenix. So the outlining schools, they could do anything they want and we'd have no say. Under the proposed, they can't do it without us. So I don't agree with it. I would say we do not accept this.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so what you need to do then is to authorize someone to vote on your behalf as a no. You can authorize Kim to do that if you want, or you can authorize Diane or any of you to do that, to come in and log into ASBA website and make that vote. So you can just use the sentence however you want to move. You can say, after the discussion, the board has voted to give direction to whomever to vote negative. So that could be your motion, and you decide who you want to place the vote on behalf of the board.
Did anyone want to make a vote? Because I would just say we just have them do it.
Sorry, yeah.
Who would have to come down and do it?
So you can make the motion to that effect. You can direct Kim.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct Kim to vote in a manner, as the board has approved, to not support the ASBA proposed bylaw.
Second.
Diane Biersley?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Yes.
Jeanie Borland?
Yes.
Dougless?
Yes.
Seems hard to vote yes for and no for.
Everybody yes for and no.
Thank you. We are on to 10.3, ASBA Board of Directors.
10.4, oh, sorry. Oh, 23, sorry. Sorry, my number on my screen doesn't match.
Maybe we don't have that one.
Okay. Madam President, the information here is, as you know, in 2020, March 2020, there will be, I think it's March or April, there will be a census in the United States. There's about $69 billion federal dollars hinging on the numbers and the results of this census. Of real concern in Arizona is that anyone with a post office box address, those households will not be counted. And there's a very large percentage of citizens in Bullhead City Elementary School District who have only post office box addresses. So it's in our best interest to encourage those folks to reach out to the Census Bureau to, you know, to let everybody know, let the Census Bureau know that they are here so that our numbers all get counted. This could result in some huge dollars coming into us, or it could result in some huge dollars being denied to us because our numbers are not counted. So this is just simply a formality for you to do. We can, we've already got it on the website that we want, you know, we're supporting this. But it would be good because then this could be published in the paper saying that our district is really supporting the census and encouraging folks to add their households to the count.
So we just need to approve?
Yeah, because ASBA did all the work here. We're just cutting and pasting.
I move that we approve 10.3.
I second. Dougless?
Yes.
Jeanie Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Biersley?
Yes.
We skipped to 10.5. We don't have a 10.4. We're fine. 10.5 Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year 1819.
Madam President, Molly, our Molly Meduano, our business clerk, has worked very hard with Ronnie Hart from the high school district to get this document and had it submitted a day early. And you can see that it reconciles all of our accounts for MNO budget. And we came out very well, came out looking exactly like we should relative to last year's We have to formally, you are supposed to formally certify this budget and sign for it. So that's why it's on the agenda.
I move we approve 10.5.
I'll second that with a comment. Madam President, it looks like overall we're in good shape revenue-wise. In the future, after the Molly and Dr. Stewart have had a chance to work with something like this, I would hope that we would not have so many negatives showing up. That shouldn't be happening.
Well, we certainly hope there are no negatives, Doug.
Well, I'm talking about Title I and the other titles, Dr. Stewart.
Absolutely. We're not liking that very much at all.
Right.
Yes.
Jeanie Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Biersley?
Yes.
Number 11, future topics.
To have that item we pulled for the next meeting? And we're going to add that into the workshop.
8.3D?
Yeah.
Into the workshop?
And then also on the agenda, yes.
Yes, okay. Anything else? Any other? Okay.
I just, I would make a reminder to you that one of the topics by law that has to be discussed next month is the superintendent's evaluation. And I will send you copies of the form, a copy of the policy, and then I'm also going to send you a copy of the law that relates because there's a piece from the law that is missing in the policy. And I think as a board, you will want to correct that.
Do we want to have a discussion in the workshop on that as well?
We don't have to make a decision on that till December, right?
No, you don't have to. I just have to get this stuff back to you by November 10th, and then they give you a month to do whatever. The other thing you could do is that if you discussed in that workshop, or if you looked at the documents in advance and then proposed a change to that policy for a first reading in November, then you could have the second reading in December when you actually do the evaluation and have it all coincided, if you want to do that.
So workshop and agenda. Okay. 12, upcoming board events, ASBA Legislative Workshop on November 15th and the ASBA Annual Conference, December 17th through 19th.
I think last month, you all said nobody was planning on going. If you are, we need to have Kim get on that runway. Registrations don't close, but hotels fill up very quickly.
These are both held in Phoenix?
Yes.
Annual conference I will not be able to make, but I'll have to check on the other one.
Okay, so if you guys are interested, just go ahead and give Kim your information well in advance so that she can make the arrangements. Thank you. On to 13, date, time, and location for future meetings. Right now, we have November 21st. I am not available that day.
I am also out of town that day.
So can we move that to, how about the? If we did the week before, I can't do the Thursday either, that's the... How about the 13th or 20th? Or can we do it on a Wednesday?
I can do a Wednesday.
I already have a meeting on Wednesday evening, and that's the day that I'm also already going to that Senator, the hearing with the Senator.
What about the 20th?
The 20th? I can do the 20th easily.
Are you good on the 20th?
I'm good on the 20th. Yeah, my flight leaves Thursday late.
Okay.
Doug, are you good on November 20th by phone? We'll play it by ear?
Play it by ear, yes. Thanks.
Okay, so I make a, all right, let's go ahead and set that for November 20th. Can we set the workshop at 5:30?
That would actually be better for me.
Better for me, too.
Thank you.
And you want an hour workshop, half hour workshop?
I think it's going to...
Half hour, what?
Half hour should be good.
Yeah, half hour, half hour's good.
Okay. So 5:30 for the workshop and 6 for the meeting?
Perfect. Thank you. Now I am going, we can motion move into executive session, right?
Yes, I'll move we enter into executive session.
I second that. Dougless?
Yes, but let the minutes show that I am exiting the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. You have a good evening.
Thank you. You all, too.
Jeanie Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Aye.
Diane Biersley?
Yes.
I make the motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll second.
Diane Biersley?
Yes.
Jeanie Borland?
Yes.
Cory Burgess?
Yes.